So we're lucky to have technology in Zoom so we can host the two candidates. We're lucky to have Steve Petty as our moderator. He's a long-term resident of the town, having graduated from the Sherborne Schools. He served as a select board member, a regional school committee member, and a few years ago was the town's building inspector, and has held many other roles and positions. He returned to town in 2018, and since then he has joined the board of the Elder Houghton Committee and Town Forests. He's been actively involved in the Woodcutters Group, the NIP monks, which deliver firewood to seniors and others in town. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve. I just asked that everybody mute themselves, and we have a series of questions. And then if you want to ask additional questions, if you could type them into the chat, and Renee and I will monitor those as well. So Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, thanks, Sue, for asking me to host this session. These candidates represent those of our neighbors who volunteered to serve the town. Without their commitment, the town could not operate. They bring their expertise, devote their time, and make our town a good place to live and raise and educate our kids, and in many cases retire. There are a total of 19 candidates running for positions, however, and there is only one contested seat. That is for the select. First, I want to acknowledge the uncontested positions. And if the candidate is on the call, please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized. Moderator, Mary Wolf. Assessor for three years, Daruth Kachal. Assessor for one year, Jim Williams. Sherborne School Committee, three years, Amanda Brown and Dennis Quandt. And Sherborne School Committee for one year, David Kaziz. Trustees of Southern Academy, David Welch. Library trustees, Chris Kenny, Sue Lepard, and Vicki Relas. Water Commissioner, Frank Hess. Cemetery Commissioner, Helen Heffron. Planning Board, William Dunham. Regional School Committee, Judith Miller. Board of Health, Rebecca Hanawell and Matthew Beavers. And Recreation Commissioner, Gavin Mish. Thank you, folks, for your willingness to continue to fill these positions. We will, as mentioned, we will be monitoring for those of you that would like to ask questions. But we're going to be, we have some questions that have already been put forward that we can start with first. Now, I'm going to introduce our candidates, and this will not be a debate. We have some questions to pose to them, and we'll give them each two minutes to respond. A bell will ring when their time is up. We have also collected questions from residents, and you two will have an opportunity to ask questions. We ask that you type your questions into the chat, and we'll get to them as soon as we are able. So please mute your screen and meet the candidates and listen to Frank Hook and Marion Nuttrop. All right, now, the first question. And why don't we start with Frank? Why are you running for select board? And what makes you qualified for the position?
Well, first of all, thank you so much to Kelly and Stephen Petty for giving us the opportunity to have this discussion. Really greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. So 27 years ago, we were looking for a place to raise our family. We found Sherborne. We ultimately ended up moving here, and we love this town. We've been able to raise our kids. Our kids have succeeded in this town. The reasons we love this town and wanted our family to grow up here was for the excellent quality schools, the open spaces, the access to the recreation fields, the outdoors, and just the quality of life, the community in Sherborne. I also want to thank Charles Young for his dedication. This, I want to continue the work that Charles has been doing in town in the Select Board. He's been very involved in our town, and I want to acknowledge that. What makes me qualified for the position is that I've been in sales for over 20 years, sales and marketing, and have been involved in product launch and have led a worldwide sales force. I've worked and been responsible for P&amp;L as well as, yes, the product development. I have volunteered probably 25 of those years. I've been, I started out with your, I started out with volunteering at St. Teresa, and then have subsequently got involved more with our town and our community in volunteering. I've been involved with the Sherborne Community Center, and I've been for six years on the school committee. I've been involved with the policies, budget, and hiring of the superintendent. So I feel that I've had quite a bit of experience in town government and in volunteering. I look forward to the opportunity to continue that.
Yeah, there's no way we can get in.
Thank you, Frank. Marion?
All right. I'm going to really try to keep it to two minutes. The Select Board already has expertise in engineering and infrastructure. They're experts in business management and finance there, law and real estate. But I bring something a little different. I have been a research scientist for a long time. I ran a successful research program at Harvard and Children's Hospital that requires a lot of skills. I mean, you have to deal with lots of information, integrate information, come up with novel ideas, problem solve, and work with worldwide teams. It's a tremendous science, it's a tremendously collaborative effort. So I bring also a budgeting and hiring personnel experience because running a research lab is kind of like running a small business. And marketing experience because you have to sell your ideas. So with this kind of broad perspective, I also have gained a really broad knowledge of Sherborne. I have been on forest and trail for many years. I've lived here for 40 years. But I only had time to really get involved in town government about seven years ago, when I was elected to planning board. I ran for planning board because I wanted to get involved. And in, on the planning board, I've led the writing and organization of the town's new master plan that I think is a good guide for everyone, and it covers all aspects of town government and function. I've also led the writing of the new Open Space and Recreation Plan, being chair of the Open Space Committee. I was involved in the Housing Production Plan as a member of the Housing Partnership that set up that plan. And I still serve on the Land Acquisition Committee. So I've also made a lot of regional connections. I'm the Sherborne representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, and I think this will be important on the Select Board. And connections with neighboring towns to solve problems that are joint problems with Natick and Holliston, for example. So all in all, I think with this expertise and with my objectivity that I've learned over many years in science, I will be a good collaborator with a strong team on the Select Board. And I hope to make the team a little stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. All right, our next question, and it really has three parts. What do you see as the top three priorities of our town? A, next year, B, next three to five years, and C, the next decade? Marion, you can go first this time.
All right, so I have to ask, do we get a little more than two minutes? Do you want three priorities for each of the term, the time terms? Oh, that's what I did, so I'll try to race through them.
That would be fine.
We can come back to them if I don't have time to expand. First of all, next year, the Select Board has already laid out their goals for the select, for the next year. They have to complete the intermunicipal agreement with Natick and Framingham to get the Coolidge Crossing development done so that we get over 10% of affordable housing. That's hugely important. They need to resolve the rider first refusal issue on Hunting Lane. This is 25 acres of beautiful land that will be part of Unity Farm and will be open to the public. It's a wonderful opportunity for the town. And they need to, in the next year, manage and guide and take advantage of the changes in town that are happening right now. We're coming out of COVID. Meeting venues and styles are changing, and new spaces opening up at the library. And the Select Board will be managing all of that. In the medium term, I think we have to begin immediately to increase our tax base. And I believe that Sherborne has opportunities from marketing itself as a great place to live and really good property investment that it hasn't yet exploited. And in the next three to five years, I'd make sure that action is taken in town center on water and sewer. This has been percolating for a long time, and the situation as it stands is not safe and could turn into an emergency at any point. Finally, I would implement the recommendations of the Governance Task Force. And the Select Board has already reiterated some of these, increasing communication among town boards and between the government and the citizens, and improving the Internet experience on the town website and the ease with which people deal with town hall. So long term, if I can have another few seconds. I think it's important, long term, to keep building relationships at the regional and state level. Because with unfunded mandates that don't take into account the special limitations of small towns without water and sewer like us, it's extremely difficult, if not impossible, for us to keep up and keep our revenues in the right direction. Second, I would continue to manage housing development as we go forward. We all know what those problems are. And we can't stop all housing, but we have to be careful that we protect our groundwater sources as housing develops. And I've done a lot of work on that on the planning board already. And finally, this really is not to wait five or 10 years to do. We need to constantly be looking for ways to decrease Sherborne's carbon footprint and to do whatever we can to promote the mitigation of climate change and changes in our consumption and, and, yeah, I would say throwing away habits, our short-term view of the resources we use and the way that we recycle them. And this is a global problem. What can Sherborne do? Well, just a little bit, but still, we have a head start. We have a great tree cover that keeps us cool. We have clean water resources. We have a good head start, but we need to do more for the next decades, not only the next 10 years.
Thank you, Marion. Frank?
So I would go back to the reasons why we moved to Sherborne. I would like to start with those three goals and then bed that into the next year, three to five years, and 10 years. And what brought us to Sherborne is that quality of life. And that is so important. We also have a diversity of population and want to continue to make sure that that population grows. Support the quality of our schools and of our educational system. Key, of key importance is one of the things that keeps people wanting to move into our town and to keep our town as viable as it does. Volunteerism, you mentioned, Steve, earlier. The, all the work that all the people have, the volunteers, have done in our community and in our town to make them a town of great talent. I want to make sure that we continue to foster volunteerism and continue that work. So for next year, what I'm looking, I think we need to focus on is the challenges of affordable housing. The getting the Coolidge Crossing development moved on to the next levels is of critical importance. We need to stay and focus on the police chief selection, and we need to finish that up. We need to get the library finished and into their own home. Not only is it good for the library, but the Sherborne Community Center, I think, would like to have their building there. Need to explore the needs in town for the various different organizations in town, such as the COA Historical Society and other Sherborne groups within this new space that's becoming available with the library and opening up with the community center and the rest of the town and along with the needs. So those are the priorities for the first year. For the three to five year, I would look to maintaining fiscal responsibility while keeping the schools strong. Fiscal responsibility is critically important. Looking at ways of bringing in more revenue, but also being very fiscally conservative and looking at the costs and looking at ways of working together to reduce some of those expenses that we possibly have in town. The other thing would be is to work on developing the goals for our town. The Select Board has started that process. Part of that process has come from the master plan, but there's a lot more that needs to happen, not only within the Select Board, but with all the various committees and boards in our town and make them work together better. And part of that then becomes the communications, not only within the boards, but also the communication between the various different boards of our town so that our town can work more efficiently. And then lastly, the communication with our, the rest of our community. For the next decade, certainly one of the things that I think is, we need to start focusing and working on now. And I know that we've brought on a assistance and ability coordinator. I've actually spoken with her. And the work that she's starting to do is of critical importance, not just from a Sherborne perspective, but for a global perspective. What is Sherborne going to contribute to improving and reducing emissions, greenhouse gases, carbon footprint? Need to implement alternative energy sources and clean energy by reducing transportation greenhouse gases, improving building heating and cooling alternatives, and also energy alternatives such as solar. And another really critical aspect to this is our green, open spaces, trees, plants are great scrubbers for CO2. We need to keep those, we need to have that. And that is part of a well-balanced, sustainable environment. Obviously, within our own town, in looking at our own town sustainability, is maintaining that quality of life. And then the things that keep our life in high quality, which would be the groundwater and our open spaces.
Okay, Frank, thank you very much. Our next question, number three. Frank, you can take this one first. What is the role and importance of the Select Board? And how do you view your role as a new member?
So the Select Board is the leadership and governing board of the town. The Select Board is what sets the focus and the goals of the town. Critically important for our town, I mean, part of that. I would be a good steward of the town and be a good listener in trying to understand better the needs of our citizens. Certainly, we have the needs that we've already discussed, and the focuses that we would have for the next 10 years. But there's also the day-to-day things that need to be taken care of. So I would work very strongly to hear what those needs are, bring those needs forward, work to develop consensus, and then work towards creating a successful solution to whatever those are. We've had several, every year, we have several of those major, sometimes not so major issues. But how can we work together to come to a positive outcome as opposed to sometimes a not-so-positive outcome? So I want to, I would work very strongly with, and work as hard as I can with the Select Board, utilizing my skills and working towards those goals.
Thank you. Marion?
Right. The Select Board is really a team, and it deals with a broad range of issues. Frank has told you that it's the central decision-maker of the town, along course with town meeting. But the Select Board is really usually where the buck stops. So what would be my role? I would, I think, be a good collaborator on this team. I would make sure that decisions are always made in an objective and systematic way and a fair way, taking all the facts from all parties into account, but keeping our long-term goals in mind. And that's a major, I think, a major point that should be made constantly as we make decisions in town. Finally, I would make communication a very high priority. I have a lot of experience in this, communicating with other boards and with citizens of the town. The Town Governance Committee has pointed out the great need for education of citizens and the ease with which citizens find things out in town. I think I could contribute to that. And I have already built relationships with neighboring towns. I would continue to do that. But I would build more relationships at the state level because really we need to partner with towns like us to make small towns without infrastructure like Sherborne more visible at the state level. And finally, I'd help the Select Board take maximum advantage of funding opportunities. There are many funding opportunities at the state level, and I know that our town planner and others take advantage of some of them. But it takes an ear to the ground and a lot of work to get that done. And finally, I would keep the goals of the master plan and the goals of the governance plan and the goals set by the Select Board on the radar screen. We need to be constantly reminded of what we've decided to do because setting goals is the easy part, and implementation is hard. So I would track implementation and keep our eyes on the prize.
Right. Thank you, Marion. All right, question number four. Marion, you can go first on this. What can the town do to increase affordable housing and diversity of housing choices?
Right. Affordable housing is, you know, front and center, of course, on the planning board. So I know that we've done a lot already. I was involved in production of the Housing Production Plan, which allows us to add affordable housing incrementally. Of course, we all now know that we have to get to 10% in order to control the kind of development that we have in town. With the Coolidge Street development of 120 rental units, we will be over 10%. Based on our 19, our, sorry, our 2010 census, which is what they've based it on up to now, will be over 10%. But the new 2020 census increases our denominator of total residential units, and we have to constantly look to increase affordable housing as the residential units increase to stay above 10%. So the planning board got passed this past year an affordable housing bylaw that requires any multi-unit development to add 15%. And that kind of keeps us ahead, we hope. But we need to follow through with these affordable developments like the one on Coolidge Street to integrate these new neighbors into our town. Especially that development is a bit segregated on the edge of town. And the, but the residents should not be segregated. They should be integrated into our social life and government life to the greatest extent we can. And finally, I would work at the state level to revisit the affordable and workplace housing and other housing initiatives at the state level. There are several, including small houses, workforce houses. But they're very difficult to do with the constraints of a small town. However, I think the state could modify the 40B or Affordable Housing Law to include houses of our, or I would say residents that have a little more than the lowest threshold that they set. Because we really need interim, intermediate housing, intermediate-level housing in this town. And that brings us to diversity of housing choices. Age-restricted, over-55 housing is good. We've quite, we're adding quite a bit, especially if the over-55 on Coolidge Street comes to completion. But still, this is the kind of housing that we should add. There's a big need, and it does not add to our school costs. We need new creative ways, though, and some of these we've envisioned. For example, conversion of existing single-family homes to duplexes or triplexes should be made a little bit easier so that we can get more housing in town that's of a smaller scale. The look and feel of the town is important rather than add duplexes that look like cookie cutter duplexes. We all know what that looks like. We could convert or make new homes that look like single-family homes or farms, the extended barn farm of a New England town, and make it a duplex to accommodate more people of different levels of means. But the bottom line in all of this is that it's all for naught if we don't protect our clean water resources. And that is always the limiting factor in town. And then to keep our property values up all over town, we have to be careful that we don't spoil our rural character. We want to keep that country feel because it raises all boats. It keeps our property values up.
And, Marion, please.
Okay. That's sufficient.
All right. Thank you. Frank?
So the affordable housing in Sherborne is always going to be a challenge. It's always going to be a lot of work. But as Marion mentioned, the Coolidge Street crossing 120 units is certainly a step in the right direction. The other developments that are coming in town also have a percentage of 40B affordable housing as well, which does help with the percentage of affordable housing on top of just what's happening with Coolidge Street. And then there's also the over-55 at Coolidge Street. I do want to bring up that point that on Coolidge Street, the rental property of 120 units can have a major, major impact on the schools. And I would, if I were on the Select Board, one of the things I would be doing is working right now with the school board to make sure that they are prepared for what could potentially be coming in the future and start working on the preparations for that. It's not really a panacea for us to build a large number of houses and developments in Sherborne to help offset our property taxes. Because as, as the quantity and number of citizens and housing grows, so does the needs grow. So it is really critically important. And we'll work very hard in working with our neighbors, Natick, Framingham, Holliston, Dover, et cetera, on trying to keep our costs low and help increase, I should say, the amount and quantity of supports and services that we would need in town. And we need to do all that we can to maintain those costs. Going back to affordable housing. Affordable housing, like Woodhaven and Abbey Road projects, I think, are really excellent options to have in Sherborne. And we have some open spaces where we can utilize some of our land for that. And if we do, if we have the ability to have the town create some of those projects, that those would be possible for over-55 and for affordable housing. Again, we want to make sure that we watch, when we do do the construction projects, that we... Again, we want to make sure that we watch uh when we do do the uh the construction projects that we work with them in a um responsible manner so that we can make sure that they come in on budget and within time. Uh so I would use utilize my skills and my experience in 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 business and um project management to to help to facilitate and make sure that we get the right types of um contractors and vendors to work on these types of projects.
Thank you, Frank. All right, the next question, and Frank, if you can take the lead of this one, please. And also, uh for both of our candidates, if we can try to keep our our answers a little bit shorter, that would be terrific. Uh the question is, the older adult population comprises almost 25% of the population of Sherburne. All surrounding towns have senior centers and intergenerational centers. What do you think the town offers to older residents? Do you see an importance of meeting the needs of this population? And what do you think those needs are? Frank?
So I want to just tell you a very brief story. I brought my father from California to take care of him. The the COA was amazingly helpful. Couldn't have done it without the the help of the COA. And being able to take care of my father and being able for him to en- enjoy life here in in Sherburne. And that's critically in in important that 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 helped. I'm younger, um father was older, but that help that the COA provided was 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 key. What I would want to know from the um COA and from our um seniors in town or elders in town is what they would want and what what they would need. So I would survey our seniors, have discussion groups with our seniors to determine what their needs and uh desires are in in the town. And then start working towards coming up with a solution or work with the other the select board and with the the various different spaces uh that we have in town to see what could be done, if anything can be done, and if not, what we can do to move forward with another alternative or seeking other alternative or solutions that are are responsible and and available.
Thank you, Frank. Marian?
Yeah, well, I would second what Frank said about the uh services provided by the COA. As far as I can see, they're quite outstanding, really amazing. I think the question that they're getting at here is uh where, what's the space needs of all these functions, really? Um some functions need seniors-only space. And uh those would include the kinds of things like counseling and uh and services. There's no question that the COA needs better space for those functions. Other functions, those I think, should keep seniors integrated in the community of all ages to stay engaged. So the the question that was posed at town meeting, I think, was probably not exactly uh was not detailed enough to allow us to make uh the best decision we might have, basically. It sounded as if the COA wanted all the functions under one roof. And I understand that that's not necessarily the case. So basically, more uh analysis and public education on this needs to be done. First of all, there are the classes, the big classes and meetings. They could still be in town hall. Town hall has space. There are those social functions with meals where you need a lot of food prep. Uh that has been done in the church. Can be done in restaurants, but we don't know what the options are there. Unlikely that we're gonna build a restaurant just for seniors. But there is the informal drop-in and hangout space that seniors want. I know as a senior, I would love a happy hour every week, to tell you the truth, and where should that be? Do we use town restaurants and boost town businesses? Or do we hang out at a at a center that's separated from the rest of the town? As you can tell, I'm I'm in favor of as much integration as possible. But I acknowledge that there really is a need and it needs to be analyzed and a presentation done carefully to the whole town.
Thank you, Marian. Um number six, and Marian, if you would start off with this, please. Space constraints are an issue in town. Town hall can barely accommodate staff, and there are always conflicts for meeting space. Everyone is counting on utilizing the new space at the library. We know that that space will be a premium, especially as the room opens up to outside rooms. What do you see as possible solutions for the future space needs of the town?
Right. Well, I I kind of uh put the space needs in three parts. First, there are the town employees, the offices, the small conference rooms. Town hall spaces are already being allocated with the opening up of the basement and the clearing out of the museum. We don't know, I must say, I don't know the exact process that is being used, but I think it should be transparent to everyone who works in town hall, as well as the boards and committees. And particularly, it should be orchestrated by the select board. Of course, with the collaboration of the town administrator. And then there's the meeting space. Uh there is a a a real bottleneck at 7:00 PM on some nights for boards, committees, and public meetings. I think we benefit from a central uh scheduling process for all of those spaces. You re- you reference outside groups. I don't know what they are, but Sherburne groups should certainly take precedence. And then there's public events. We have the community center. We will have the library and town hall. I think those are more or less taken care of. The real, the real rub is among the office space. And I don't know, this is close to the heart of the COA, because your space in the basement has really been inadequate. Uh so I would hope that the select board, and if I'm on the select board, that I would be able to uh identify a a good space for COA and negotiate all of the push and pull of space among all the other town boards and committees. Future options? Well, there are low-cost options. Maybe the town could rent some space, you know, in the in the neighboring churches. There are three of them. They have meeting halls. Then there are high-cost options, the caustic, the caustic property. It would require new building, and of course, that requires money and capital. So uh I'll I'll leave it at that, but that's uh I think where we stand in far, as far as space goes.
Thank you, Marian. Frank?
So um in terms of um the the space and and housing, we we again are having um new spaces made available. The museum has come out of the uh out of town hall, so there's space available there. So there that allows for a certain type of the space. The community center has a certain amount of space, as mentioned, and so does the, so do the churches. So do the um the 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 fire department. They have a um a conference room upstairs. There's a conference room in the police department. There are different spaces within our town. We need to look at all those spaces, but we also need to look at the needs. So again, I think what I would do as a select board member is bring all stakeholders together. Understand what all the needs are, stand, understand what all the availabilities are. And then start to look to see what we can do with it, with all the facility and space that we have within our town. Once, once that has happened, then we can look to see, do we have enough space? Is the space adequate? Or do we need to do something else with space and increase the space? And what kind of space does it make the most sense to increase? Is that a senior center or is that something else? Um I will say that the uh the the community center, the Sherburne Community Center, which uh many of you in the audience have helped to create, the 1858, is a uh, it is a beautiful space and is a space for for everyone. It's a place for everyone. It's the the heart and soul of our community. It's the idea of the community center is to bring our community together in the central place in downtown. That is that place where people can gather and so on. But it's also a place that when it's not being utilized for something, can can be um used for meetings and has been used and is used for meetings. I would also say that the uh the COA's Stay Fit and Shine programs would be, you know, ideally suited in at the community center. Um we have the uh this the Sherburne Hour. It's a nice little coffee shop. Uh we have C and L Frosted's. So there there's variety of of space needs, uh space uh availabilities. We just need to look at what the needs are. And as the uh as a, as being on the select board, I think that's the critical thing, is to really understand what all the needs are from all the different um stakeholders and then try to work on solving the problem. And there's real quite a bit of solutions and quite a few solutions.
All right. Thank you, Frank. All right, here uh we have a few more questions that uh have been submitted to residents. Compared to other towns in Massachusetts, do you think Sherburne is run well? If your answer is yes, please explain what you would do. If your answer is not yes, please explain what you would do to improve things. Marian? Oh, excuse me. Yes, Marian, take that, please.
Want me first? Okay. Uh yeah, this question was asked by the Governance Task Force back in 2019, and they came up with uh some really good answers. I mean, their conclusion was that no, Sherburne's not run as well as it could be. Uh I would begin by saying that, given that Sherburne is run by volunteer boards supported by a really small number of town employees, we don't do a really bad job. Staff and resources are limited. But given that, we really need to maximize the efficiency of that staff, the competence of the staff, with performance reviews required, continuing education as needed. And uh we have a nice and formal, close relationship throughout town hall, but sometimes hard decisions need to be made, and that's on the plate of the select board. As far as uh other things that the uh Governance Task Board Force recommended, certainly committees and boards can still coordinate better. There have been some steps forward on this, but there, it could be much, much better. The information, the information flow from town governance uh bodies to the citizens really needs improvement. I think the internet access is key here, and our town website. Uh no, no uh blame goes to Jeannie Guthrie. She does an amazing job with the website that we have. But the website itself needs to be re- revisited and improved. And finally, there's a lot to learn from other towns. And lastly, I would say we can maximize our volunteers better than we have. We see that there's only one candidate for most of these offices. But there're met, there's so many smart people in Sherburne and so much talent out there. One thing that I think we could do is to do a better job of recognizing and celebrating the volunteer board and committee members that we do have. You know, they get a thanks when they leave the committee. But while they're working, it's often thankless, thankless, and a lot of hard work. And if you're like me, uh I don't mind doing it. Most of us don't. We enjoy it because it keeps us in contact with good friends and smart people. But we could do a better job of of recognizing, maybe through events of some sort, and and thereby attracting more volunteers to town govern- government.
Thank you, Marian. Frank?
So I feel that there's room for growth in in every organization, in every government, and certainly in in Sherburne. But I put, I take my hats off. We have about 30 uh committees and boards. And of that, there's probably about 160 plus uh volunteers that do that work. They are very dedicated, hardworking, uh educated, well-meaning uh hard workers that that make this town run. And I think that's great, and I agree with Marian. We need to celebrate them a lot more and and thank them a lot more. It's it's very time-consuming. It's time away from their family when we're trying, when we're talking about, you know, family values here. But with that said, that doesn't mean that there isn't room for improvement. And I agree that the Governance Task Force can help us with that. They can help us to look at setting those goals and bringing, I would say, bringing together all the boards to develop a to improve our communication, to develop um the 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 plans and the goals for each of the boards. Sorry about that. The um communication then is a is a critically important part. Can we just pause for a second?
Sure. All set?
I think so. A telemarker, we uh call screen them, and sometimes you just can't get to it fast enough, so I apologize.
So adjust your time.
Yeah, right. So um I feel that working with the Governance Task Force i- is important, and they would keep us focused. And I, the the inter uh discussion and and having a a conference, so to speak, bringing the different um committees together to work on the goals that everybody can understand what those goals are and how to improve communications. I would also say that we need to significantly improve the 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 communications between our government and our citizens. We should need to have somebody that's more of a full-time person working, maybe more full-time people, working on that as a as a job. It it is really of great and uh importance to be able to have our citizens get the information that they need. And our our information isn't always easy to find. When when I go and look for different bits of information from our town website, it takes a while and it's not always easy to find. So I definitely would recommend that.
All right. Thank you, Frank. All right. The Community Preservation Act has been adopted by over 187 towns in the Commonwealth. Sherburne has voted down this funding concept twice. There is another funding opportunity for each town in the state by establishing a cultural district center. There would not be a tax levy for such an effort, but there would need to be collaboration with area businesses and organizations. Several area towns, such as Nady, Midfield, and Framingham, have already done this and have received significant, significant grants and have received lots of favorable publicity. Do you see this as a goal Sherburne might consider? Frank, why don't you take this one first?
Um the um Community Preservation Act uh would be, would be ideal for, uh well, it'd be good to keep Sherburne historic character and um keep Sherburne. I would need to look more into the uh the Community Preservation Act, to be honest with you.
Okay, fine. Marian?
Uh yeah, the the Community Preservation Act was enacted probably twenty or so years ago. And Sherburne kind of missed the boat on that because when it was enacted by the state, it was uh, it was and still is funded by uh deed fees at the state level. And the rule was that any town that adopted it would commit at one, anywhere between 1 and 3% of an o- an over uh not an override, but in a uh, an extra fee on property taxes. That would go into a state pool. And then the town could use that money, which would be doubled by the state, to do whatever they want, almost, including historic preservation, affordable housing, environmental projects, everything that was uh from being promoted by the state at that time. So uh they no longer offer matching funds of 100%. It's gone up and down over the years. It went down as low as 11%, but now it's back up to about 25 or 30. So Sherburne still has the option of adopting that uh this Community Preservation Act, but Sherburne residents are extremely afraid of any rise of any kind in their taxes. So this is actually a small tax increase that would be paid back to the town, uh but not at total matching fund. So that's what the CPA is. Uh I think we would have to study, you know, the um the value of that at this point and uh see what the percentage uh donation by the state. and see what the percentage donation by the state is. But if, for example, we could convince the citizens that it's a good idea, we can't lose, and that money could be used for things that we all desperately need, like a safe water in town center or sidewalks where we need them. There are lots of needs. Yeah, so that's the CPA. I think the cultural district is a separate question.
All right, thank you, Marion. All right, here's another, this is a question that was sent in from a resident. We all know how challenging it is for Sherburne to maintain a balanced town budget, which was at about twenty-eight point six million dollars year ending June thirtieth. And importantly, the line items account for almost seventy-eight percent of the annual budget. Schools' education at fifty-nine percent, employee retirement pensions nine point eight percent, and police and fire at nine percent. How will you, as a Select Board member, ensure the town budget is well managed and our tax rates kept from escalating ever higher? Marion, do you want to hit that one first, please?
Sure. We all know now that most of our budget is already spoken for at the time that it comes in. We have very little wiggle room on the expense side. And so we need to somehow increase the tax base, the tax revenues. Can we do that by adding housing? Yes, but we've already heard the downsides of that. I think our best option is to increase the value of existing homes. Now, the focus has always been on tax rate. The twenty bucks per thousand is sort of the psychological tipping point here. But actually, what we really care about is how much we're paying per year, our tax bill. So I think it's important to realize that if we increase values in the town, our tax rate may go down because we can lower the percentage of that value that's taxed. But your tax bill may stay the same. But still, your asset, your house, will have increased by who knows how much equity. And you have a great equity advantage there, even if your taxes are high. So as far as the high taxes, why are they so high? We only can really tax fifty percent of our land with houses. The rest is conservation or open space. We pay a lot for our excellent schools. And I just think we have to remember that we choose to live here just for those benefits, our open space and our schools. So yes, we do pay high taxes. But if we can increase our equity by increasing the valuation of properties in the town through marketing, for example, it is a win-win for all of us.
Thank you, Marion. Frank, you want to give that an answer, please?
Would you please repeat that question?
Yes, we all know how challenging it is for Sherburne to maintain a balanced budget, which was at about twenty-eight point six million dollars for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2020. Importantly, three line items account for almost seventy-eight percent of the annual budget. Schools' education at fifty-nine percent, employee retirement pensions at nine point eight percent, and police and fire at nine percent. How will you, as a Select Board member, ensure the town's budget is well managed and our tax rates kept from escalating ever higher? You're muted, Frank.
With the, there you go, thank you. With the time that I spent on the school committee and also with my experience in business, I've had to manage and control and maintain budgets. It's not an easy job. It's a very challenging problem. But looking very carefully at the way our business, our schools and our police and fire are run, looking at ways of saving money, looking even at some of the sustainability, bringing in the solar panels and various ways of heating our town buildings can really reduce some of our costs. So there are ways of looking at reducing costs. We mentioned the aspect of working with our neighboring, our contiguous towns around us and helping and support. Maybe that we don't end up buying all the pieces of equipment, but possibly renting out some of the equipment that we have or possibly even renting some of the equipment that we don't have. Could help to really reduce some of the expenses that we have, just as a couple of thoughts. So more of those types of things have to be discussed. We need to bring all of our stakeholders together to be able to evaluate those things. I would say that we worked very hard when I was on the school committee. And I've noticed that in this budget as well, the school committee has really come in very conservative in their budget and has done a really good job. The overall budget went up in the neighborhood of just shy of two percent. Yet the school committee budget, or the schools' budget, came in much lower in the neighborhood of about a percent. So that's very encouraging with the continual growth in town and trying to maintain level budgeting. But it still requires working together with all the stakeholders and looking at different ways. The other thing obviously would be is if we look at the types of development, it doesn't always just need to be housing development either. We could look at some various different types of development, possibly business development that could have a very different tax base around the edges of our town. And that could bring in some extra revenue without increasing the cost of bringing in that extra development. So there's a variety of things that we can do and solve.
Thank you, Frank. All right, the next question is Sherburne's drinking water and wastewater situation is unique for a town in eastern Massachusetts with nearly one hundred percent private wells for all residents, small public water supply wells for town buildings, businesses, and places of worship. Wastewater septic systems in the downtown Sherburne area are all located quite close in proximity to drinking water wells. New Mass Department guidelines, DEP guidelines for public water supplies are soon to require new lower PFAS containment testing at the twenty-part-for-trillion level. If you were to be elected to the Select Board, what specific steps do you plan to undertake to ensure residents will have access to clean drinking water now and for many decades to come? Frank, I think you're up next to go first.
I'm first, thank you. One of the, you mentioned several things in your question. And certainly one of them was the West Town Center and the wells and sewer systems in close by seventy-two, the wells and potential growth of our town. With our town being, our center of town being actually in the center of town makes it very challenging to bring any kind of a water or sewer source to the center of our town. Once that happens, there might be citizens that would, or homes and housing and developments that would want to access that. Then the challenge becomes is we have a development boom. And when we start to go down that road, do we really want to look at becoming a town that looks a little bit more like Framingham and Natick? Or do we want to maintain those open spaces? I mentioned earlier that in the Sustainability Plan, keeping the green community, keeping the trees is ACO2-scrubber and does help our environment. Do we want to become more, increase our development? If we increase our own development, the other thing that is happening is there's a lot of runoff from that development. And that runoff from that development, talking about the PFAS, is that there's a larger percentage and chance of PFAS going into our wells and contaminating our drinking water. So certainly, we need to start right away with baseline testing to understand where we stand now with PFAS so that we can continue to monitor and evaluate where that's going. And also try to understand where they're coming from, where the PFAS, if we do have that in our groundwater, what, where they're coming from and what we can do to reduce the amount of PFAS or some of the other pollutants that are getting into our well water. So I think we need to look very carefully at our development as well as working together.
Thank you, Frank. Marion?
All right, there are two parts to that question. Frank concentrated more on the town-wide water problems or lack thereof so far in homes and businesses throughout town. But the real, and I think that's more or less under control. That is, the state monitors PFAS, we all have to worry about that. But in general, the Board of Health is pretty strict about wells for private residences. The knotty problem is really the town center. And the town center currently is frankly not sustainable. It's not a question of if we'll need a clean water source for town center, but when. Currently, the wells and septics overlap in town center. And all we need is for state testing to show up PFAS or other contaminant levels in the town center wells. And there already have been signs that some of the wells are not great down by the town hall. So that would be a very costly emergency. It would impact all of our property values and raise all of our taxes because we'd have to fund an immediate fix, new wells, new filters, et cetera. This has been going on for a long time. In 2007, the town actually voted two-thirds to encourage a water and sewer in town center. But nothing happened. In 2014, again, we got a town center option committee to look at what the options were. And they did a lot of work and identified a potential water source in Price Woodlands. The fact remains that the town center does not have an aquifer under it. The nearest aquifer is the Price Woodlands up by Morse Road. So sooner or later, we're going to have to bite the bullet. And I think we need to take that tiger by the tail really and start to move on it, even though it may be expensive. We have to look, first of all, affirm that Price Woodland actually has enough water. Make a plan to bring that water to town center in a strictly limited water district so that it doesn't open legal battles over who gets it and who doesn't. And then we have to start right away looking for grants, partnerships, bonds, fundraising, all kinds of options because it's going to cost several million dollars. Now, I think it is an option that we get that started. We've seen that fundraising in Sherburne can be really effective. We did the playground, put in millions of private funds to the library. If we had water to the town center, we might be able to fundraise. But we'll also need a lot of grant writing and a lot of pressure at the state. So I think we have the engineering expertise in town and we have legal consultants and we have grant writing skills, we should get it started. And I think the Select Board should lead the charge on that.
Thank you, Marion. All right, now this is the last question that I have, Sue may have some others that have come in from our audience. Let's go with this last one. One potential upside of the difficult pandemic year we are just coming out of has been the higher participation rate of residents at many town public meetings held by the Select Board and various other town boards and committees using the Zoom platform. However, at the same time, many of these boards and committees are struggling to fill member vacancies. And many committees are seeking younger members to permit some of the seniors to retire from years of voluntary duty and fresh perspectives on addressing diverse town needs. How will you, as a Select Board member, help encourage more volunteers to fill these board committee vacancies and ensure our town continues its history of citizen engagement and contributions? Marion, would you like to try that first?
Sure, that's a really good question and it's a tough one. You know, I've interviewed many of the people that have come onto board sort of late in life like me or earlier, like some of the more responsible citizens, I would say, who volunteered right in the beginning. And often, they are attracted to a board or committee because they see a problem or something really bothers them, they're unhappy with something. And I could tell you, that's how I got on Planning Board. I saw a property that was about to be developed in a very, in a way that was bad for the town, or I thought it was bad for the town, and I got involved. So I think every time that we hear a comment or complaint from our citizens, we should capitalize on that and talk to them about getting involved in the solution. That's one option. Another option is tied to the communication theme that we talked about before. If more people in town could see what boards and committees do on a firsthand basis, it would help. Now Zoom has been great on that, it really has. And I think we should take advantage of the option to maybe make hybrid meetings that allow people to just drop in and listen to what's going on. I'm hoping that the state will allow that. Committee members may have to be in Town Hall when the new rules get into place. But the public should absolutely be able to drop in by Zoom and see what's going on. Because younger people have families, they have obligations, they have jobs, and they don't have the time to sit in town center every evening in meetings. So I think it's a good question and we need some creative thinking.
Thank you, Marion. Frank?
I agree that we need creative thinking. I think enthusiasm for the town of Sherburne is what helps get people to become volunteers. We have one hundred and sixty volunteers. And let me just share a story. I was at caucus with somebody that's on the Zoom call, Mike Kikum. And George Fisk made the plea because there was only one person running for two open slots on the school committee and I happened to be sitting next to him. And as George was making his plea, Mike jabbed me in my ribs and said, you know, you should consider running for that. And I was like, hmm, maybe I should consider running for that. And so I came home and we had a discussion because I had a family and, you know, the time that it would take and all that. And I got involved. That's, so I was involved already with the community center, I was already involved, but I got involved more. And I think that's really one of the things that helps. We have one hundred and sixty volunteers currently. It should be part of them to help to recruit. And I know that they would and that they know people and have contacts with. And I agree with Marion as well that when there's, when people see that there's a problem in town and they have a skill that can address that problem and help with that problem, that that should be encouraged and brought forward. The aspect of hybrid is that the state right now isn't requiring, won't allow that. So even if we would like to have a Zoom, we've always had that we've had the cable network and cable, the airing on cable TV really live. In that situation, obviously, people could see what was going on at any of the various meetings and they could run down to Town Hall and make their statement, but that's not always very convenient. So Zoom would certainly be a much more convenient scenario. But again, that would have to be something to be worked out with the state because right now that is not part of open meeting law, it's not allowed. So there needs to be some ground swell of towns and we should be part of that as well, trying to get that Zoom and hybrid meetings. And I think there's other ways that we can look at asking for volunteers. Nextdoor Sherburne, other various platforms, Sherburne Rocks, et cetera, to start to indicate what the needs are, what the positions are like, and that there is a need. The way I knew that there was a need is I went to caucus. If I hadn't gotten a caucus, I wouldn't have known. So I think there needs to be more publicity in and around the volunteering aspect. And I think people realizing that there is a need, you know, people in this town. I think people realizing that there is a need, you know, people in this town love this town, and they want to help and they want to do what they can. So, you know, I think we'll get more people to step up, but at least that'll be a start.
Thank you, Frank. Now, that's all the questions I have. I'm going to turn it over to Sue in just a second if she has other questions.
Yeah.
Or I do, I do want to thank Frank and Marian very much for your participation in this, and I also want to thank you for your past service to the town and for your ongoing future service in the town. Thank you so much. Sue?
Yep, thanks, Steve. And I'd just like to echo thank you to Marian and Frank. There was just one question that came in. Both advisory and the select board unanimously approved for their support for a feasibility study for a senior center. If elected, would you support the study?
Is that to me?
Yeah, yeah, you go first, Marian.
Okay, I would like to hear that study better defined, honestly. I would like to hear the language, because the language at town meeting did not really support the $40,000 of a consultant that you were bringing in. I'd like to know first exactly what has been done already by the COA. I know that a lot has been done in analyzing the need and the spaces, but that wasn't shared with the public, exactly what your analysis was and why you were unable to complete the analysis of the space needs. It was presented as a single senior center and a potential looking for the site for a senior center, and I think it needs to be reformulated and re-presented. So I would want to hear that from you, and I think it is possible to reformulate and bring it to the town in a way that everyone would support, and I would really encourage you to do that. In fact, I would, I would love to help you put that together if I could.
Frank, you able to go ahead on the next?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would agree with what Marian said. I would add to that, that this is one of those areas where the communication that we have with the town that sets the process and the parameters and the aspects for creating those warrants and getting those warrants done by the letter of the requirements for town meeting are not necessarily easy. If you look for them on the town's website, it's there not to be found. So it's wonderful to work with those that are presenting and bringing warrants up, but it would certainly be helpful to communicate that better so that it's a more streamlined process. Let's start with that. So with that, there was a series of things that needed to be accomplished, and that could be accomplished and presented within the warrant article, and then those that are voting on those at town meeting would have a little better understanding possibly of what the issues are, what the full background and history is of a particular warrant article, instead of having to be a person that's in the know to be able to make that decision. So I'd start with that. But going back to really the question that's being asked, part of the reason it got shot down was that confusion between the type of warrant and the reason that the money was being looked for. But ultimately, with that being said, I don't think it was very, it was, it could have been made more clear whether the funding for the feasibility study was for a new building or for existing locations, and I think that was part of the challenge of why people were wondering, why do we need to spend $40,000 just to look at existing buildings? So I agree that what we need to do is understand what the needs and what the desires are of the COA, and I would like to, I would want to work with them so that we can fulfill the needs that they have. Again, looking at the potential current spaces in our town, like we talked about much earlier in this meeting, and what the needs are, and forging a path forward.
Okay.
Frank?
All the questions. Again, I'd like to thank the both of you. I wish you both good luck in the election. The session has been recorded, and we will get it to the cable station for those that couldn't attend. And I just have two reminders that if you're going to do a mail-in ballot, it has to be received at town hall by Wednesday, June 9th. You can leave it in the little box if you want, the box is checked regularly. And if you're voting in person, that the location this year is at the DPW Garage located on Butler Street, and will take place on the 15th, which is a week from tomorrow, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I thank everybody that participated and attended, and we'll see you next week.
Sue, if I could just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
The application for the ballot is due on June the 9th, and then you receive a ballot at home, and then that ballot is due by the 15th at town hall.
Yes, you're right.
Just want to make that clarification, just make sure everybody got that.
And a big thank you to Steve Petty for being such a great moderator. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.